For the public hearing on the license for Vernon Township's transfer of liquor license. Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Sterns?
Here. Pledge of allegiance, if you're able, please stand.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you have a cell phone or an iPad, you can unmute it. I will try to remind you to put it back on at the end of the meeting. Okay, we have a notice of public hearing. Katie?
The public hearing was advertised in the Meadville Tribune on Wednesday, May 12th, 2021.
Okay, thank you. We have an invitation for a public comment regarding the proposed transfer of the liquor license. Do we have anybody who wants to speak on behalf of that? Any comments from council? Roll call, or I'm sorry, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Katie?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel? Sterns?
Aye. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start our regular meeting. Katie, you wanna follow order with the roll call, please?
Donahue?
Here.
McKnight?
Here.
Roa?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Sterns?
Here. A public comment on an agenda item. Lee, you signed up. You just give us your name.
Yeah, thanks, council. Lee Scandonaro, 230 Mount Hope Street. I just wanted to say I'm appreciative of the town hall being proposed. I was wondering if it would be open to council for that town hall to be open to all recommendations regarding Meadville Police Department that the Pennsylvania Economy League made, not just the 911 dispatch. So I think other ones are related to the size of the police force as well as use of the holding cell. I'd be interested in making comments and hearing residents talk about those issues, not just the 911 dispatch. So, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Liquor? Gary?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm just here to see if I can get an update on my memorial. I did talk to Mr. Washington. He said there was an item on who's supposed to be responsible or something for the placement of the memorial. It seems like it's going back and forth. So I'm just trying to find out where maybe you guys are with it.
We have, have we had any communication from?
We have. I spoke with Mr. Washington earlier this week and then spoke with Elizabeth. The school district is awaiting council to take action. There will be a resolution on the June 2nd meeting for council to take action on that will then go back to the school board for the school board to issue an agreement with Reverend Manning regarding the placement of the memorial.
Thank you.
And just sorry, to be clear, that resolution will be around us. What would we be considering?
Consent to the placement of the memorial.
Okay.
It'll essentially be a three-party agreement between the school district, the city, and Reverend Manning that would say, yeah, it's gonna be this size, it's gonna be located here, it's gonna look like this, it's gonna be maintained by X. You know, it'd have all the legal protections.
That will come after the school board gives their approval. Once we've resolved to approve the placement of it, then school board approves the placement of it. And they said that traditionally they have an agreement that they use. And so they know that we need to be a party to that agreement as well. So that would be phase two of the action that both boards will need to take. Okay. I'm sorry, phase two is what? So phase one would be, we're both, council and the school board will be approving the placement of it. Okay. Okay, and then the contract will come up and then we'll have to have council authorize signatures so that we can be a party to that contract. Okay. It'll be after we approve placement and school board approves placement. Okay, so at the end of all these steps, we'll have approval, we'll know where it's going, we'll know what it looks like, who's taking care of it. Okay. Everybody's responsibilities. Yeah. And Mr. Manning will be involved in those? He'll be a part of the contract. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And Brenda Costa?
I'm Brenda Costa. My address is 251 Jefferson Street, and I wanted to comment on the agenda item of paving the portion of Jefferson Street. My understanding is that the current project is paving between Randolph Street and State Street. I just had a comment about safety of the intersection of Jefferson Street and Randolph Street. I've lived at the top of the top of Jefferson Street for 15 years, and once you get past Limber Road, Jefferson is kind of a raceway. People really end up going quite fast downhill there, and there's not a stop sign anywhere until you get to the intersection with State Street. And ordinarily, some people slow down some as they approach the brick portion that's below Reynolds Ave. But my concern is, once that area is, I'm sorry, Randolph, once that area is paved, I am concerned that people will not be slowing down as they're getting to the bottom of the hill. I myself have had a number of close calls where people who are traveling on Randolph think that it's a four-way stop and expect that people zooming down the hill from Jefferson will be stopping at that intersection. And Jefferson does not have stop signs on it. So I just asked the council to consider either making that a four-way stop or adding signage on the opposing sign, stop signs that say it's a two-way stop or cross-traffic, does not stop here, because I'm afraid, once that area is paved and people are less likely to slow down, one of these near misses is going to become a serious accident. So, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Well, thank you.
I go down that street constantly. I have a tummy ribbon, and you're exactly right.
Yeah, yeah. I think it should be a four-way stop.
A lot of people stop anyhow, but they will, you know.
But the speeders don't.
Right.
We did have a traffic review committee that would look at these things and make recommendations to council. Is that still the case, Gary?
I don't think that committee's been around for 15 years or so, but we can, we'll definitely take a look at it, and I'll talk to Nathan and the police chief and see what they think and see if there's any options we might have and come back to council.
Okay. And then we'll be in touch with you with what we thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what else? Disaster emergency update, Gary?
Sure. We are still in the disaster emergency declaration. Of course, we have had some opening up. You'll see, most people here aren't wearing masks. Under city policy, we follow the governor's policy, which follows the CDC rape requirements. It says if you're fully vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask in most situations. So that's one bright spot we have here. Also, just a quick update, the other order that the governor's going to have, of course, most mitigation measures will be lifted as of Memorial Day, and then the masking for those who are not vaccinated will be lifted once 70% of Pennsylvania adults are vaccinated, fully vaccinated. So I think we're right about 50% right now, fully vaccinated adults in Pennsylvania. So we're getting there, but for now, I think we will just stay under the declaration until the state maybe lifts theirs. And then next, I think at the next meeting, we can talk about going back to the regular, to the current city hall. I'm just not exactly clear on what the governor means by most mitigation that's going to be lifted on Memorial Day. So I think by our next meeting, we would know what that means for sure, and we can talk about going back to the regular city building, maybe on the second June meeting. So.
So if you have not had your vaccination, then, or vaccine, you have to wear the mask.
That's right.
That's our requirement in the city building.
Because we're following the governor's.
Yep.
If I might, on that same point, Councilman Vogel, you raised a question last week about meeting remotely as we're moving forward. And I just want to clarify, I think that I was unclear. While the emergency declaration is still in place, mandates can be lifted, mask restrictions can be lifted. If the emergency declaration is still in place, it is totally fine to continue meeting remotely. Once that emergency declaration is not in place, we're gonna have to look for additional guidance from some of the bodies that are passing guidance down to us from the state. I don't know what, if they're gonna, you know, because of all this, that's gonna change, that meeting in person is not gonna be a requirement anymore? I don't know what's gonna happen with that. So when I said, yes, continue meeting remotely if you choose to, that's as long as the emergency declaration is still in place. Thanks for that clarification. Yeah, and that question had been around authorities, like if they chose to, if it still worked, you know, if folks preferred it. But that's helpful to know. For them to know.
Katie, notice of executive sessions?
Your honor, an executive session was held on May 5th, 2021, to discuss real estate and litigation.
Thank you. Proven minutes of May 5th, motion, please?
No.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Katie, we have two letters, or an email, I guess, one letter, an email.
Your honor, the first letter is from Donna Cesna of the Meadville Area Recreation Authority. She is writing to let the council know that to date, COVID has cost the Mark over $100,000 in revenue due to the state shutting down. The Mark was shut down from March 16th until June 1st. They lost programs such as hockey tryouts, competitive swim, three-versus-three spring hockey league, pickleball, aqua fitness, water walk, lap swim, and all their spring events such as the Mark 5K, Casino Night, TGI Friday, and others. In 2019, their programming revenue was 538,894. When the pandemic hit, they saw a massive decrease in programming, and operational revenues of over $100,000 down to 409,286. They believe they did a good job at minimizing risk of further massive decreases, but they do need help getting back on their feet. They say the Mark is owned by everyone, and its very existence is a testament to the power of collective action. As they move forward and continue to expand the possibilities at the Mark and remain a state-of-the-art public recreation facility, they strive to remain relevant and essential in the lives of children, adults, and seniors. Some of their incurred costs have been cleaning staff, new munters controller, cleaning supplies, and restart maintenance, so they're asking for help in COVID relief efforts.
Just so you have a kind of an update, I asked the county commissioners to give me an update on any funding that was left from the CARES Act, and all that funding has already been, you know, been used. There is no more funding. So I told her to go ahead and send a letter to us, because we have that 1.2 million, I guess we're gonna be discussing later this evening, or?
Not today, no.
Not today, okay. But I know the county has used all their money, and there's no funds available now. So, okay. Thank you.
The second, your honor, is an email from Lee Scandonaro dated May 14th, 2021. As COVID restrictions lift and we come out of a frankly damaging time for health and development of young people in the city, he is asking that you please provide city residents with an update on the summer parks program, if it is happening this year, what the details are and the location. He noted that my Meadville Action Plan identified the summer parks program as a valued asset to the community. Now, perhaps more than ever, it is important that we prioritize access to public spaces.
Gary, I ask you to respond to Lee on that information. Lee, did you get the information?
No, not yet.
Okay. Forthcoming?
Yes.
Managers report.
Thank you, your honor. I just have a few items. The first one, cleanup day was this last weekend, and I'll have more details at a future meeting, but this time, we had 138 loads compared to last year, which was 137 loads, fairly consistent. Of course, 2019 was only 79, so I'm not sure what happened there. But it was fairly successful. We had quite a few, quite a few people. I want to thank Councilman Donahue and Katie and Chris for helping out with staffing and taking money on that. Next item, Amber Gabel, our payroll and HR coordinator, is leaving us. I think she's in her last week, and we've hired, we were very fortunate in finding Amy Godwin. She's actually already on the job and is training with Amber right now, so she's a new face at the city building. If you want to stop in and say hi. We're very excited to have her. She has a high level of expertise in HR and payroll, so she's gonna be a good addition. The next item I have is, it's the land bank grant. The city council has been looking at creating a land bank specifically to potentially aggregate and clean up some blighted properties around the city. That's kind of in a holding pattern at the moment. We need some support from other taxing bodies as well to make that really effective. And to that end, the redevelopment authority, primarily Mary Ann Manano, our community development director, applied for a grant from the Center for Community Progress, which is a national nonprofit that's dedicated toward, and I'm gonna mess this up, but basically dedicated to community development, cleanups, light remediation, equity, things like that. And just last week, I believe, if she's notified, they received a grant, and it's essentially $10,000 for technical assistance as well to partner with a partner in the land bank to help, I believe it's mainly to acquire and clean up some properties, at least to get started with that, as well as 100 hours of technical assistance in actually setting up the land bank, setting up the strategy for it, a plan that then we can take to potential partners to say, this is what we're looking to do. So Mary Ann will be working with those consultants on that, probably beginning in fall, to help really flesh out what our plan might be for a land bank. And then after that, potentially, we could move forward with that with support from other taxing bodies and other partners. So I just wanted to report that to council.
So when you say taxing bodies, are we looking at the county commissioner and the school board?
That's correct. Yep. So the last item I had is, just this week, we received our, the CDBJ allocation for the upcoming application. That total is going to be 330,745, which is significantly more than last year's 308,000. So it's more than we thought we were going to get, which is, of course, always a good thing. Just for context, we had the first hearing some time ago. The deadline for the public to provide, propose projects is actually this Friday, and then at the next meeting, we'll come to council with both staff recommendations, suggestions from the public, et cetera, for council to consider. And then I think the final actual action would be at the meeting after that. So it won't be at the next meeting, but the meeting after.
What is the date of that meeting for the public?
Well, it'd just be the next regular council meeting. Will be the June 2nd meeting, where we'll bring those to council, all the various projects and funding and budget. And then it would be, of course, up to council to select the specific ones, because I'm sure we'll have more projects than we have funding. But it'll be up to council to make that decision moving forward. So that's all I had for managers report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Gary? Council's priorities for 2021, reviewing and moving the 911 dispatch town hall. I believe we set that, we set that for June?
June 9th, at 6:00 PM here. That is set. We're still working out details exactly for format, but I mean, it's pretty much set, but I'll come back to council at the next meeting with, this is what we propose to do to try to keep everything on track. We're proposing 90 minutes, very brief introduction by the mayor, very basic kind of explanation of what we're talking about, and then the majority of it, of course, would be for people to comment and ask questions publicly.
Can the chief be there?
The chief will be there.
Do we want to entertain the idea of opening it beyond this one recommendation? Do we have time for that?
That's up to council.
Mayor, I won't be able to attend. I'm having surgery.
Okay. Your feelings?
I'm fine with it.
I think it's too much. I think just dispatch is an hour and a half, and if you could swing dispatch with the police department, that's gonna consume a lot of their time figuring out how to do it, because now they're gonna have to switch things. If you guys want to do it, go for it. You're just gonna find a lot of cans out all at once.
I don't think we're talking about making a decision. I think we're just talking about discussing, people giving their input on it.
There's a lot to be input on dispatch. I very did it once before. It's an hour and a half.
The purpose of the town hall meeting or discussing the 911 was strictly financial, that I was under the impression where we could have the input. I know I got contacted by the county commissioner, and they were asked to have some of their staff show, and they're not gonna be here for that. So unless something has changed, are we looking at the public input for the financial, for the budget, or are we looking on how the police department responds to calls? I think we need to have that clarified.
Yeah, I think, if I'm understanding the public comment that I heard, which, I mean, makes sense to me, is like looking at the Pell recommendations specifically around police. To me, I think it makes sense, because like in these last several meetings, it feels like council has like stepped back from making 911 dispatch transfer like a priority. It doesn't feel like there's as much of a support there as there was in the beginning of the year. And so I think if we, I mean, it was a hard-fought battle to get a town hall on the agenda, but I think that if we want something to come out of it, I don't know. I guess, I don't know. I guess I'm just thinking, right, if we're thinking about what are possibilities in terms of, you know, here are things we've heard from these consultants. These are different actions that could be taken within the police department. Is there, again, because dispatch doesn't seem to be something, the vibe I'm getting is that it doesn't seem to be something, whereas gung-ho about it, maybe we're early on. Maybe it makes sense to bring in other possibilities for folks to weigh in on. Does that make sense?
Well, I think part of the reason that support may have changed is because the police department gave us a presentation outlining some considerations that we had not been aware of, and those items are enough to make some people change their position. Now, if you're paying attention to small group dynamics, you should only have one item on the agenda. And you can discuss that item ad nauseam if you want, and get all the pros and cons, and maybe make a decision. If you have three or four, eight or 10 items, as Sean says, you'll have a long meeting, nothing will be accomplished, and you'll simply be delayed.
My concern is the availability of the police, being able to come back to another town hall meeting to discuss that. You say it's gonna be 90 minutes?
That's, I mean, I think-
That's what we're planning.
In order to have enough time to gather enough public input, so.
I mean, that's my fear, is that the chief will say that with the summer coming, man hours and availability for them to step away for that period of time, or for any more time other than the ninth may be a problem. So, you know, I think that may be an opportunity to have them and then speak with them, put a time on it, especially if the questions are repetitious, or if they've been answered once, then maybe we could defer people to later on, you know, to someone that notes or something. But I think, again, with the summer coming and the police probably gonna be a lot busier, things opening up, maybe this might be the time to at least get it out there.
Are you thinking, are you right?
I'm not in support of moving to 911. So, and the reason for that is because of the information we got back on the EAPs and the services they provide. I mean, I'll be glad to listen to what the public has, but I don't think my mind's gonna change much.
Okay.
Straightforward with it.
Do you know what you need? I think that what Gary needs to know is whether or not anything's being added to the agenda for the town hall.
I sense that they were-
I think we need a consensus of council so that he understands what he needs to do.
Right. I thought they were still talking about it. I didn't want to interject or anything.
I think we are.
I'm certain if we have a town hall meeting, they come and ask, give us your input.
For the town hall meeting, just on police dispatch?
Yeah.
Just on police dispatch.
Yeah.
That's my thoughts.
Okay.
I don't, a lot of those things, which specifically do you want them to talk about? Are people reading that? There's a lot of stuff that is all about the police where we can save money. I mean, you just said the cells, get rid of the cell, or he said that somebody did. What else is there?
Uh, I mean, there's, there's-
They should come and talk about, because they could just pick three or four and come and bring that.
Yeah, there's a lot laid out. I mean-
Tell us what they are.
You can say, and I do.
Well, they don't. They don't. I'll tell you.
Reducing the size of police, I think it's the holding cells.
Reducing the size of police force, that's one. I'll go for that. You can talk about that if you want, see what people can say.
Yeah. My only concern is that it gets into a level of education where I'm going to be there, I'm going to be talking probably for more than half the time to explain, because there are several. I mean, it gets into the level, you know, the level of detail that should even have an assistant chief. And, you know, how, how do I fairly show, or, I'm not sure exactly how to be, to educate the public while, right at that hearing, essentially, and having them have actually good questions, you know, thoughtful questions when they're just hearing it for the first time. It's on the website, I believe it's on the website, the whole PEL, so we can reference that. But I'm concerned that you would need some more additional context to really understand what those recommendations are. And not to speak for the report or anything, but I'm just concerned that there would be an awful lot of discussion, and would we, how, would we say we go from one to the next to the next to the next to talk about, and everybody has an opportunity then to speak on each individual one. I am afraid it would get a little muddied, and we might not get very far with any individual item.
So what is your suggestion?
Well, I, we, I would suggest that we kind of, we do try to limit it to a couple, maybe one or two items, just to really make sure. I mean, what was discussed, what was the council priority was the dispatch, and if we could move past that and then move on to the next one, that's, that's all I'm saying, is to try to get past that, one way or the other, whether it's moved or not, just to be able to get enough information so council is comfortable making that decision. And I'm afraid if we have all of that in there, we might not get to that point.
Yeah, I think that that makes sense. And I think, given that we only have a few more weeks to figure that out, to figure out what that program will look like, what that education will look like, feels like a task, big undertaking for staff in the next couple of weeks. And so may, if I may, like, maybe a request of council, right, if we have this, if we have a town hall on police dispatch, if we're ready to kind of discuss and put the issue to bed one way or the other, following that, and then, like, if council, like if your minds not changed and we're not gonna do it, right, is there another priority that we can, like, pull from the report? Because, you know, we gotta make some moves on some of this. So maybe just, you know, we be ready to pull something out, and then we be, and we are thinking about how we can get public input on several if we want to in a way that makes sense without cramming it in.
I'm trying to think of how that was written. I think I could probably come back to council with the high priority items that are in the report and say, these are the high priority items that came out of that, out of the PEL report, and say, do you want to talk about any of these, you know, that were listed as high priority, should do sooner than later? I mean, I could bring that to council if they wanted to choose certain priorities to move forward with once dispatch is decided. And I could do that if you wanted to try to take that route. Or does a council, individual council people want to say, I like this priority, I think we should focus on that? Either way, it works, but I think we maybe look at the high priority ones that PEL said and say, okay, are these still high priority for us?
Yeah, I know at one time, I think Katie had put together that survey, that digital survey, that we all weighed in on what, you know, items were high priorities for us, and whether we take a look at that again, or we, you know, do a new iteration of it with those high priority items that Pell specifically recommended, and we can kind of re-rank. Maybe that would-
Is our strong gonna be there?
Yeah, I mean, that's where these council priorities for 2021 came from. So we need to, I mean, if we can revisit that, that's fine. We can, we can look at that, and I'll get that to council.
That's fine.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. All right. Town hall, one topic, June 9th.
And then, we're looking at the Home Rule Charter. We put that on hold for it now?
Yeah.
And focusing on the county-wide reassessment, we put that on hold for it now?
That's how I understand it, I guess.
Can I just make a comment? Just as Newcastle adopted yesterday their Home Rule Charter, so another example of a community near us, that's- So another example of a community near us that's done that. So they were in their, that multi-year process and they accepted the charter last night, right? Dan, is that what you said? Okay.
Were they already in that 47 community?
They had been, yeah, when they entered into the Home Rule process, yeah.
Council members, subcommittee reports. Beautification committee. Autumn, Larry, anything?
The committee met this month, a few weeks ago, and most of the work is focused on some fundraising initiatives so that the group has, has money to do some beautification projects. And so there are several fundraisers in the works for the year. And it's a, it's a good group. It's a large group.
Okay, great. Jim, you had some-
Something brief on finance committee. Yesterday, there was a statewide referendum and I believe that it did pass. And this referendum would provide that municipalities with paid fire departments can apply for state loans, low interest loans for fire equipment. I'm bringing this up only because it may open up another avenue of financing for us and would reduce our need for general fund borrowing. That's it, your honor.
Okay, thank you. French Creek Council of Governments. Sean?
They meet every three months.
Okay. N W A C P Subcommittee. Autumn, Larry?
We haven't met this-
Yeah, group hasn't met since they came and presented.
Okay. Autumn, Larry, Parking Subcommittee?
Nothing there.
Redevelopment, I have anything. Did you have anything on redevelopment?
No.
Okay. Recreation Subcommittee. I do have a question. Didn't, we applied for a grant that we received, Katie? For the park?
We received the Act 13 Fund, a grant for Bicentennial Park. That's part of the funding. D C and our grant is still out. We won't hear from that until late fall, probably.
Okay. There wasn't another one that came in, third one?
Not for rec.
Not for rec, no, okay. Tax exempt. Jim, Sean?
Not any at this point.
Old Business Authorizing, Authorities and Ordinance Commissions. Katie?
Your honor, there is one vacancy left, depending on council's action this evening, for a zoning hearing board alternate. The Ad Hoc Committee did meet with Tara Lawrence. She was the only applicant that was received from the last round of advertising. The Ad Hoc Committee is recommending that council appoint her to as a zoning hearing board alternate for a term ending January 1st, 2024.
Motion for appointment.
Somebody in.
I'll second.
Discussion. Who met with him?
Yep, I met.
Jim did, I think, yeah.
Oh, you did, Jim?
Yeah, we were unanimous in our viewpoint that she should be appointed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Reba?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Discussion on the, I'm sorry, proposed renaming of East Cherry Alley in honor of Ted Watts.
Thanks, your honor. Yeah, you recall, we received a request a couple of meetings ago to rename a portion of East Cherry Street in honor of Ted Watts who passed away. His local attorney passed away last year from COVID. Council had asked, what is the policy to rename the streets essentially? And it's not, really not renaming, and I shouldn't say that. It's dedicating portions of streets because it doesn't actually rename it for addressing purposes. It's just to basically dedicate sections of streets. That is in your packet. It dates to 2007 and it's basically just to memorialize prominent citizens, outstanding citizens of the city of Meadville. And so Ted certainly worked in the city for years and years, decades, and lived in the city for quite some time. So I'm not sure, at the end, I'm not sure that he was living in the city at the time, but I'm not sure if it matters to council considering the impact he had on the, on the city and the community. So with that, it appears that he would qualify for that to happen if council felt, felt appropriate to do so.
I think of Thurston Classic and Academy Theater when he came.
Especially when the academy was having financials, she stepped in. I have no problem making that happen.
I agree.
So.
Well, I don't have a problem with it, but I, it made me think, you know, we were also discussing the plaque for Johnny Foster. I actually rather see something, a street or something named instead of a plaque because he was just as important in, in my community. And there were a lot of kids that Johnny made a big impact on. I think it would really be great to have a part of a street, Willow Street where he lived or something would be awesome to have named after.
They were talking about a stone. Have they changed?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm thinking and I would like to consider that.
Did we invite? I thought-
We invited him.
I mean, because, you know, again, he was a very important part, you know, and if we're going to do streets for people, it's, I think he deserves it.
Will Andy Schreckenbuss be attending a meeting?
We had sent him a letter saying, these are the next meetings if you're interested, and I don't know that we've heard back.
We have not.
We've not heard back.
So I don't think Andy knows that a street may, that's a possibility. I don't think he knows that, you know.
How long did we send him a letter?
Right after the last council meeting.
Well, we sent him a reminder. And maybe you can put in the, the letter to him that, you know, we could consider a street. So at least he knows that.
Right.
So do you need a motion to make that happen?
No, it's, this is just discussion today. I guess what I do want to know is what section of West Cherry, East Cherry?
I would assume up by his office.
By his office.
So from-
Wasn't that what was proposed? Was from like the diamond to?
The alley?
Like that alley?
Park Avenue to Diamond Park.
Oh, the whole, the whole alley.
Yeah, because that would also include the back part of the Academy here.
That's probably why they thought about that.
So from Park to the diamond.
Yeah. Could you have that ready for us at the next meeting?
You got that, Katie?
There'll be a resolution on the next agenda for, for council to take action on.
Resolution, authorizing signatures, redevelopment fund agreement. Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on an addendum to the redevelopment fund agreement between the City of Meadville and the Redevelopment Authority to extend the agreement for an additional five years. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached tier two, subject to final approval by the city's solicitors as and for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, comptroller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please.
Motion. Second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Thank you, your honor. Yes, we've talked about this the last few meetings. This is the original $250,000 that was taken from the Long Term Capital Fund to be spent regarding blight and community development in the city. About $78,000 remains in the fund. The Redevelopment Authority is requesting an additional five years in order to, to pay, to expend those funds as it expires, actually next month. It was written with a five-year clause, or five-year sunset, just asking for an additional five years.
Will these funds be dedicated toward the blight and remediation?
It would be for the same purposes as the original agreement would be for committed to elimination of blight in the city of Meadville. Yeah, mainly having to do with blighting influences, according to the agreement.
Any questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Reba?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Under New Business Discussions, Meadville Three Year Capital Plan. Gary?
Thank you, your honor. It's that time again. You have in front of you, just handed to you immediately before the meeting. Typically, we do, we have done in the past traditionally every three years, we look at a new capital borrowing, bonding. This year, at this time, it actually went for four years. We were able to stretch the money for an additional year. So we're looking to, for, looking to do this again. So before you, this is how it was set up in the last, last one. It's set up by department. So it goes Fire Police, Public Works, and then Administration. And the last one is Parking. So I wasn't going to get into too much detail with this, but to understand how this works, you'll see in each row, you'll see what the item is that we're looking to borrow funds for with the description. And then with a by-year amount that we do look to use the funding. We would borrow them, all the funding at one time, but we propose to use the money in one of each of 2022, 2023, and 2024. And you'll see that in the columns. The next set of columns under Source of Funds will tell, really shows how we're going to pay for it. We have multiple buckets that we take, we bring the money in from for each individual item. So for example, for the aerial that we were talking about here, the total costs, we're proposing, projecting about a million dollars. And we propose for the source of funds for that is actually 125,000. It was in the last borrowing. Was that the last borrowing or the one before?
One before.
The one before. So two borrowings ago, we still have 125,000 that we propose to use as a local match, assuming we can get grant funding for it. So we propose to continue to use that and then have the remaining 875,000 from the borrowing. Okay? And that continues down all the way through all, all the pages of the spreadsheet. So like I said, I don't want to get into too much detail on that. I'll let you, let you review that and then we'll just, pretty much at every meeting moving forward, well, this will be an agenda item as we refine that. There are a lot of needs here and frankly, there are a lot of needs that we said, that when they, they got to Deb, Deb and I, we said, it's just not, it's not going to fly. We have to really cut it back. So we've already pared it down from what department heads really had asked for, knowing that it just wasn't going to work. So we're at the proposed funding, or borrowing, I'm sorry, of 4.7 million. What was the last borrowing, Deb?
3.1.
3.1. So you'll see on the last page there, you'll see Source of Funds totals. And that has all the various totals from all the various buckets that we proposed to take, to use to purchase the capital. Okay? So again, the borrowing would be 4.7. We propose to use about 815,000 from the Stormwater Fund over the next three years, 88,000 from a previous borrowing. And we're hoping to get about two, two and a half million in grants and use about 450,000 C D B G funding.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Are there measures in place that when we approve borrowing, that the funds are used only for the dedicated items and cannot be repurposed?
You mean per the terms of the bond?
Per the terms of the bond.
Yeah, you, you could never move bond money to an operating expense. It only can be used for capital. Now, if a project came under what we were, wanted, we could reallocate that to another capital project, but it can't go anywhere but-
But the capital.
But the capital. It can't be used for anything else.
So with that, if there are any other specific questions on that right now? You should review this, take a look at it, scrutinize it. It's a lot of money. But there are needs. These aren't, this isn't a wish list. This is, this is needs and we need these. When you go through that, you'll see the Public Works Department working with, you know, 15, 18, 21-year-old vehicles that we're looking to replace, you know, just making sure that we can allow the streets.
They will be placing these with new equipment or?
That's the plan. That's the proposal.
Has anyone ever looked into refurbished or, or there's a company, a few months ago, I was in contact with a company out of Pittsburgh that buys used equipment, refurbished. Has anybody looked into that?
I think Nathan-
I gave the information to the mayor and to Andy at one time.
I think Nathan has looked into that from a Public Works perspective. But for, for police and fire, we don't generally want to do that because we run them so hard that if we bought them used, we'd have to replace them even sooner than we otherwise would have to. But with Public Works, it's definitely something we could take a look at and see.
I thought Nathan was going to check on that, of course, with the fire strike. That's what you have talked about. But I don't know if he ever got back to us.
I'm not aware of that.
I'll be honest. I just, you know, I know our, you mentioned the police cars. I know they, they get run hard. But I just, I don't see spending on, I mean, because of the fact they're run hard, they're abused. And we're looking at spending 53, 52, and $48,000. And these cars are, some of them are only seven, five, six years old. To spend that much money and then you're going to end up doing it again. Maybe you might be further ahead to get something that's, you know, refurbished or see what repairs to keep those. I'm thinking of the budget, you know, down the road. Can we really afford to do that or what, what is feasible? I think it should really be looked into just saying, well, because of the, you know, that's what we want to do because we want to do it. I like, I'd like to look at the logistics behind, you know, and maybe get in contact with other, other businesses, other cities that have bought or get rid of vehicles because a lot of them aren't, may not be in as bad a shape as ours. Or, I, I don't know, but I think we ought to look into it before we commit to spending almost 150,000 just on vehicles that, again, I think within the next five, six years, we're going to be doing it again.
Deb, when was the last time we borrowed again? How much was it?
2018, 3.1 million.
3.1 million?
I will- What's the payments like? Because like Larry's saying, and I agree with Larry, maybe we change cars a little quicker than we would if you were paying, but what's the difference between the payments if we just, a one car, you know? But it might not make that much difference in where our payment is.
So when we do our bonds, we wrap it all. So we take all our money and wrap it so our payments stay somewhat consistent. So we're not adding 4.7 million and that is going to jack that payment up by 4.7 million. It's all wrapped together to try to keep, now, it will go up, but they try to keep it consistent throughout the, the life of the bonds. So it's all wrapped and it's, and it's, so it does save some money to wrap them. So the, when I spoke with John McShane, he indicated that we should be, probably have some kind of number by July in order to get to the market in a good timeframe. You know, I, I, that when we originally started talking about the capital, I did reach out to him. He would like as much time as possible so he can get, get to the market when it's best, you know, when it's the best time. But I really can't give you, I, I could, I could do, yeah, oh, no, absolutely. But as you're borrowing, it, it'll all be wrapped into all the other city debt. So it'll be, it'll, it'll be a definite increase, but I can't really tell you what that is right now until I know closer. And for the next meeting, perhaps I could, I could go to Sean and say, John, if we brought 4.7 million, what would that look like maybe? I might be able to get kind of a ballpark.
Yeah, and I don't know what addresses your question, John, but didn't, didn't, didn't you like kind of project out our payments in like the fall?
Well, we do, they're, they're projected out to the end of the bond. So there is, and I think it might even be in our budget book. I'd have to like back and look, but they are projected out for the life of, the life of the bonds. And, and like I say, they wrap them to try to keep it somewhat consistent from year to year. Now, new borrowing obviously will increase it. I just don't know how much at this point. I could maybe give John to have, give me an educated guess on what that 4.7 million would cost.
Debbie, are there any of our existing bonds that are ripe for refinancing?
Not right now.
Not right now.
I think it's another one.
I think we have one that possibly could in the future.
I think we redid most of those just recently. I think it was like four years old.
Yes, we, there, there is one or, one or two several years from now.
Just for my sake, as I'm reading this, I could be missing something here. The, in the sections where the total request doesn't look like it adds up to the column, is that, do we think that's covered by grant?
So the, the only one that specifically is the, is the Park one under Nathan's? Because I questioned him. I'm like, Nathan, you're asking for such money, but you're saying we're only going to borrow 180. And it is to do with some grants and, and the funding that's going to come forth with that.
Okay. Because, yeah, it looks like Fire Department and Administration, there's a few columns with it. And is that the same case? Is that the same?
No, Administration, that is all I T. And that, well, I'd have to honest help to check the column on it because 16, 25, 16, 7, 18. Well, the only one that could be incorrect would be the top one. Because 16, 7 goes across, 25 goes across, the 16 goes across. The only one could be added incorrectly would be the first line and, and Administration. Because that's by the year and then this tells you where it's come, where- that's by the year and then this tells you where it's come, where we're going to pull the money from. And in that particular line, it's all coming from borrowing. And those are all IT related items. Administration traditionally doesn't have widgets. We have IT.
Okay. So you just want us to just go down through it?
Yep. Take a look at it. Some more questions for the next meeting. We'll just have it on there until we get there.
Thank you, Deb. Apologize, I'm losing my voice again.
Time we look to convert any kind of brick street to asphalt per city council's policy has to go before council for approval. In this case, as Brenda referenced at the beginning of the meeting, it's a section of Jefferson Street from Randolph to State. It's currently, the brick isn't awful. It's not as bad as some other places, but the curb and, curb and gutter are pretty much shot. So this is to be paved with local federal aid route funding. It's pretty much the extent of Jefferson. I believe it's from Limber to State. It will all be paved. This is the only section that's brick to be converted. Federal money will not pay for brick streets. It only pays for asphalt. If we were not to take advantage of the federal money, it would cost us 45, $55,000 to replace that with brick as it is. So the recommendation from staff is to convert that since we have the federal money in order to save that, that additional cost.
So it would be turned, oh, it would be all blocktop then?
That's, yeah.
When you were asking about the speeding, so is it the upper or lower end?
It's, it's the lower end. There are no stop signs between Limber and State Street where Jefferson ends. So people get a pretty good head of steam going down that hill. And there are some cross streets, but the place where I personally have seen either my own experience or witnessing near misses is at Randolph. Because I think people assume that's a four-way stop, four-way stop. And people do tend to slow down as they approach the brick section. And I'm just concerned that when that's all paved, people will just keep plowing through and it'll be no more near misses. There'll be an accident in a time.
The reason I ask that, Gary, I don't know if we ever asked this or not, but if we're redoing that, re-blocktopping that, since that's a city street, it's not a state park. So can we put speed bumps in to slow the traffic?
I'd have to check with, and I'll just go to Ashley on that one, but.
Because they do that in certain areas, like in Erie, there's streets that there was a lot of speeding on. So they put, put the speed bumps in. They did it going out to Prescott right in front of Sarah's. They added the, the speed bumps. You have to at least slow down.
Yeah.
So you can bottom out.
What was that view for snowplowing?
Right. Good question.
They could take them out of the Prescott. I think they're removable.
Do they take them out?
Just a lot of crosswalks on that particular street too, like.
I mean, we potentially could, or we could do raised crosswalks, but I think if we put those in, we'd have to put signs up ahead of time so that people come, come flying down, not realize it there.
Because we never really talked about doing that. If we could control the speed of the vehicles, you know, one, it'll help maybe get them stopped there at Randolph. And then it's also safety. I'd like that, you know, get some information on that. I'd like that.
Gary, is it, is it possible at all to repair the, the gutter and curb and leave the brick untouched? Is that?
Well, if you do that and there's any sunken areas of brick that abut the, the curb and gutter, then you're going to have, you know, it's going to go like, like this. You know, it just wouldn't work out right. You really need to do the brick, at least break the edge brick up to meet the good curb and gutter for it to work right. I mean, you could do that, but the curb and gutter alone would cost you probably 15 or 20 grand easy.
And is, is that kind of work, like not fully re-bricking, but like that kind of work? This, the state wouldn't, wouldn't cover that either?
No, they, they wouldn't. As I understand it, they wouldn't pay for any work related to brick. I haven't read the regulations, but that's what Nathan indicates to me.
So the, the most feasible thing is to pave it and possibly look at putting stop signs and speed bumps, correct?
Yeah, we, we can take a look at that and see what we'd be required to put a stop sign in. We can't just.
Even the stop signs with the light, the flashing light or something on it?
Put the speed, the little speed device up there too, maybe slow some people down in the meantime. Yeah, I think a stop sign might be helpful. We'll have to look at that. We have to go through a process to do that.
Right, right.
Gary, can you remind us of the process that will happen to notify the folks in the neighborhood and what kind of investigation?
Right. So if council blesses the idea today, then we send the letters out to the 12 abutting property owners to get their, to let them know council will consider it at their June 2nd meeting. If they have any concerns, let us know, or if they can just want to come to the meeting itself. So that's, that's what the purpose of today is, is if council's amenable to it, or at least is open to putting it on the agenda as a resolution for the next meeting, then we send the letters out. So I'll need to know if council's amenable to it. Okay. It doesn't mean you're going to vote yes on it. It just means we'll talk about it.
While asking that, didn't we used to have an ordinance or an agreement that if we removed the brick, that?
It has to go in front of council? That's what?
Well, no, 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 no. We had to replace it.
We took care of it. Got rid of it.
Did we take?
I think initially, when Brian Hill was still here.
Yes.
And it went into place back then. I think it was initially one for one.
One for one.
But I think that was gotten rid of 10, 15 years ago.
So we would make, we would have made another street brick that hadn't been brick?
Yeah. That's why all those street, streets.
Actually, Center was originally brick.
Yeah.
In front of the townhouses.
And the market house was supposed to be bricked out in front of Market Street. And the market house over to Chestnut, that was, that was part of it. Resolution awarding bids and authorizing signatures for milling and resurfacing. Katie?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville awarding the bid in the amount of 234,678.57 to Shields Asphalt Paving Incorporated for milling and resurfacing of streets at various locations within the city of Meadville as part of the 2021 City Capital Paving Project. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas bids for milling and resurfacing streets at various locations within the city of Meadville were advertised in the Meadville Tribune and due on Thursday, May 6, 2021. And whereas Public Works Support Coordinator Jeannie Smith reviewed the bids and per the bid recommendation letter recommends the city award the project to Shields Asphalt Paving Incorporated. Now therefore be it resolved at the city of Meadville by and through the Council of the City of Meadville hereby awards the bid to Shields Asphalt Paving Incorporated in the amount of 234,678.57. Be it further resolved, the mayor, comptroller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to complete the milling and resurfacing of streets at various locations within the city of Meadville.
Motion, please.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Gary.
Thank you, Your Honor. Nathan had gone through this in, back in April, as far as the streets that we're looking to pave. This would be in addition to the CDBG funded paving that we approved last meeting. The streets for the benefit of the public to be paved out of, or to be paved out of capital would be Mulberry Street from Chestnut to West Cherry. West Cherry from Water to Market, that's alongside the, the market house. Mulberry Street from Walnut to East Steers. South Cottage Street from Willow to Short. And with South Cottage under a CDBG that would continue from Short to Poplar. So all of South Cottage would be done down there. Willow Street from Water Street to South Main Street. Water Street Extension from the bypass to Linden Alley. And the Water Street Extension is essentially the entrance to the sewer plant off of the bypass. Linden Alley from Water Street Extension to the pavement change, which is, once you get into the, once you go off the bypass, you take a left. That's Linden Alley. That's actually a public street that leads back into the sewer plant. Liberty Street from Clark to Poplar. Azelia Street from North Main to Michelle Avenue. And Finney Avenue from Ellis to its end. So that's what's to be paved under the capital paving this year.
Any questions for Gary?
We came in a lot under budget.
It did. It came in considerably under budget. So we're looking to probably add saw sections from here to there with appropriate change orders for Deb. So we don't get anyone surprised. But yeah, we were hoping to get this, the low unit price to add a little bit of work to it to take advantage of that.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Hi.
McKnight?
Hi.
Rowa?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Sterns?
Hi. A motion to award bid for?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville awarding the bid in the amount of $75,600 to Shields Asphalt Paving Incorporated for construction of straight curb and driveway aprons at various locations within the city of Meadville as part of the 2021 City Capital Paving Project. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas bids for construction of straight curb and driveway aprons at various locations within the city of Meadville were advertised in the Meadville Tribune and due on Thursday, May 6, 2021. And whereas Public Works Support Coordinator Jeannie Smith reviewed the bids and per the bid recommendation letter recommends the city award the project to Shields Asphalt Paving Incorporated. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Meadville by and through the Council of the City of Meadville hereby awards the bid, the bid to Shields Asphalt Paving Incorporated in the amount of $75,600. Be it further resolved, the mayor, comptroller, and city clerk are authorized and directed to execute any and all of documents and agreements necessary to complete the construction of straight curb and driveway aprons at various locations within the city of Meadville.
Motion to award bids for signature?
Second. Second.
Gary?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is related to the previous item. These are for straight curb and driveway aprons on Willow and South Cottage. So whether the curb is spent or broken up or whatever, it'll be replaced. And the driveway apron part would be to bring existing driveway aprons into conformance with maybe minor changes in elevation as part of the paving project on the streets.
So even though this is Shields Asphalt Paving, it will be concrete?
That's correct.
So I see a Meadville-based company put in a bid. Do we have local procurement? Anything on the books?
No, we're governed by state law as far as procurement on that.
We have to go lowest bidder, even if we've got a Meadville-based?
Lowest responsible bidder.
Let me tell you the story. A number of years ago, I won't say how many, two people bid on police radios. One was a local outfit and one wasn't. The bid was $12 different. Now, the local people pay far more than $12 in franchise taxes or whatever. And we talked about preferential bidding and they said, no, we cannot have preferential bidding. And in fact, that would work against the city because other qualified voters would say, why would we bother submitting a bid? Because they're going to try to go with the local person. So a little bit of history lesson there.
Any questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Hi.
McKnight?
Hi.
Rowa?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Sterns?
Resolution authorizing transfer of Cannon Chop House liquor license from Vernon to Meadville.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville, County of Crawford, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania approving transfer of restaurant liquor license, license number R-7906 into the city of Meadville from Vernon Township. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas Act 131 of 2000, which amends the Commonwealth's liquor code, authorizes the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board to approve in certain instances, the transfer of restaurant liquor licenses across municipal boundaries, but within the same county, regardless of the quota limitations provided for in Section 461 of the liquor code. If sales of liquor and malt or brewed beverages are legal within the municipality receiving the license. And whereas prior to the transfer of a restaurant liquor license as referenced above, the receiving municipality is required to adopt a resolution approving the transfer of the license from outside the municipality to inside the municipality. And whereas TG Holdings LLC has requested the approval of the city of Meadville for the proposed transfer of Pennsylvania Restaurant Liquor License Number R-7906 to facilities located within the city of Meadville and operating under the name of Cannon's Chop House, with the understanding that said transfer must be approved at a later date by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. And whereas amendments to the liquor code stipulate that prior to adoption of a resolution by the receiving municipality, at least one public hearing be held for the purpose of permitting interested parties to state their concern regarding the transfer of a restaurant liquor license into the receiving municipality. And whereas notice of a public hearing was advertised on May 12, 2021 in the Meadville Tribune, newspaper of general circulation for the city of Meadville, and a public hearing was held on this matter on May 19, 2021, as required by the Pennsylvania liquor code prior to the adoption of this resolution. And whereas it is understood pursuant to 47 PS, Section 4-461A, that the license, if approved, may not be transferred out of the city of Meadville for at least five years after the date that the license premises are operational in the city of Meadville. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Meadville hereby finds that the transfer of a restaurant liquor license into the city of Meadville by TG Holdings LLC will not adversely affect the welfare, health, peace, and morals of the municipality or its residents. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Meadville hereby approves by adoption of this resolution, the proposed transfer of restaurant liquor license number R-7906 by TG Holdings LLC, operating as Cannon's Chop House, to be located at 994 Market Street, Meadville, Pennsylvania, subject to the approval by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. Be it further resolved, TG Holdings LLC, operating as Cannon's Chop House, shall be required to comply with all ordinances, resolutions, policies, and code requirements in effect in the city of Meadville, what shall include but not be limited to requirements of the city of Meadville Board of Health.
Motion, authorize transfer?
So move.
Second?
Read a bale wolf there for a minute.
Katie, I missed it. Could you read it again? Just kidding. I did.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, this of course relates to the hearing that we had at the beginning of, immediately previous to this meeting. This requirement is precedent to the Liquor Control Board actually approving the, the transfer of the liquor license from Vernon Township into the city, because we are already over the quota established by the state of liquor license within the city. This would of course go to the, to 994 Market Street, the site of the former 1776 bar and grill.
Any questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Hi.
McKnight?
Hi.
Rowa?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Sterns?
Resolution authorizing submission of community project. Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing submission of an appropriation request form for fiscal year 2022 to U.S. Senator Bob Casey's office for the purpose of acquiring funds to purchase new fire apparatus. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas the city of Meadville Fire Department currently operates with aging fire apparatus, specifically a 30-year-old Grumman pumper and a 28-year-old Sutphen aerial truck. And whereas the Grumman pumper needs replaced as it is unrepairable due to no parts being available for purchase and noncompliant with the current National Fire Protection Association standards. And whereas the city of Meadville has applied multiple times to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency's Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program to replace the pumper with no award granted to date. And whereas the city of Meadville desires to request the support of U.S. Senator Bob Casey for a fiscal year 2022 federal appropriation for the purpose of a community project that would fund the acquisition of a new hybrid fire apparatus to replace the city of Meadville Fire Department's Grumman pumper and Sutphen aerial truck. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the appropriate city staff are hereby authorized to submit an appropriations request form for fiscal year 2022 to U.S. Senator Bob Casey's office in the amount of and not to exceed $1 million, subject to final approval of the city solicitor. Be it further resolved that the appropriate city staff are hereby directed and authorized to take all action and to execute any and all appropriate documents associated with the appropriations request.
Motion to submit.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Gary.
Yes. Trying to get a little creative in funding of the aerial. And you would have seen in the capital budget, you'll see the million-dollar grant, and that's what this is talking about. Essentially, it's a federal earmark. It's legislated money. That's what we're going to try to get. I applaud the chief. He's, he would actually propose to, to combine the aerial and then 69 and 61, which is the aerial and the old pumper, the 1991 pumper, into one vehicle. So then you have a pumper and then this aerial. And it's known in the, in the, in the industry as a quint. So it's a little bit smaller than what we have. The aerial would be a little bit smaller and there'd be no bucket at the end. It'd just be a stick. It'd be a ladder. A little bit less expensive than a full aerial. This is probably going to come in right around 900,000, maybe a little bit more, but we had it not to exceed because we're not exactly there yet. He's still, still getting final specs on it. But we're hoping then, Mariana's going to kind of lead the effort along with chief because it's a, it's a very political process. So she's talking to Casey, Toomey, Mike Kelly, state reps, the college, the hospital, county, trying to get letters of support from pretty much everybody to say, we've tried to get this before. We really need this. You know, this is old, old equipment. So this is a fairly creative way of doing it. We're hoping that it's successful in this case, of course. We're hoping that it's successful in this case, of course. We probably would not hear about this until probably October-ish, September, October, I'm thinking. So that's what that's all about. And hopefully we can get that money and save that million dollars in capital for something else.
So by combining two trucks into one, we would save approximately seven-hundred thousand dollars in borrowed funds. Because as I recall, a regular aerial is about one-point-two million and a pumper's about five-hundred thousand.
Roughly, yeah. And the other reason is we're down to a three-man minimum in the, in the fire department. And there's no reason to have the three trucks anymore because we don't have the personnel to drive them. So it kind of works out well that way.
Just out of curiosity, there was a fire and West Mead responded with their aerial. Will this have an automatic hose or will someone have to be up there manning the hose?
I don't know. The answer probably would be automatic. I would think that chief would spec that, but I don't know. I know Vernon Central's got a, like a little radio-controlled one. It's pretty cool where they can, they have that at the fire at Cuffell's place. Yeah, it's pretty cool. Not sure if we'll have that.
Could be too early to tell, but do you think, so Jim had mentioned the ballot question that had passed around municipal fire departments, being able to borrow from the state. Do you think that would impact this request?
Well, that's a feder, this is a federal request and that's a state law. So I assume they're not gonna, you mean, would one nix out the other?
Yeah, like what they say. You know, you could get the money from the state and borrow it. So we shouldn't, you know?
I can't say for sure, but I don't think so. I hope not, of course. It's a good question. So that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, any other questions?
Roll call.
Donahue?
Hi.
McKnight?
Hi.
Roa?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Sterns?
Hi. May have resolution authorizing signatures, temporary access demolition, demolition, I'm sorry. Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a temporary access and authorization agreement for demolition of fire damaged structures located at ten-eighty Market Street. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor as and for binding an effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, comptroller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please. Motion. Second?
Second.
Discussion, Gary?
Thank you, Your Honor. This property had a, there was a fire. It suffered a fire on May third, two thousand twenty, or two thousand, yeah, twenty-twenty. And the owner had subsequently attempted to repair the damage, but it's just been determined that it's just too far gone for him to be able to afford to repair it. And the city has offered to basically go and demolish it, lean the property, but he'll, he'll retain ownership. This is the same process that we took with the property on South Cottage Street last year. It was a fairly far-gone property over there as well. Demolish it, lean the property, basically turn it back into grass. And that's what we'll do here as well.
Was this property not insured? Because I know there's provisions.
It did not appear to be.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Hi.
McKnight?
Hi.
Roa?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Sterns?
Hi. A resolution H, authorizing signatures, fire company and emergency medical services.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a fire company and emergency services grant agreement for the purchase of various equipment between the City of Meadville and the Office of the State Fire Commissioner. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor as and for binding an effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copy of the attached agreement in the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please.
I move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have to again give kudos to Chief Wiley for seeking as many grant funds as he can. He's going after quite a few and is fairly innovative in how he's going about it. With this one in particular, it's a fairly standard grant from the state fire commissioner. It's for small equipment. We do these fairly routinely. This first one here is for thirteen-thousand, four-hundred-eighty dollars and ninety-six cents. And it's for various rescue tools, flashlights, lanterns, hooks, and a fan. So that's what we're looking for here. Just really, it's just a signature on it. Essentially, it's an, it's an authorization for electronic transfer. It's fairly unique in grant, in the grant world. But that's pretty much how they work, so that's all I have.
Did Jill apply for this grant?
I think Jill was the, yeah, was the signatory on it. That's correct. Captain staff.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Hi.
McKnight?
Hi.
Roa?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Sterns?
A resolution authorizing signature of fire company, emergency medical services. Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a fire company and emergency services grant agreement for the purchase of pagers, batteries, and other various equipment between the City of Meadville and the Office of the State Fire Commissioner. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor as and for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please.
I move.
Second? Gary, discussion?
Yes, this is the pretty much identical program. It's the same program, just a different grant. This one is for eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. It's for radios, portions of the cost of radios, pagers for the entire department, some batteries, and four-wheelproof vests.
Any questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Hi.
McKnight?
Hi.
Roa?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Sterns?
Hi. Councilmember's statement. Gary, I'll start with you.
Well, school's almost out, thank God. But the good thing is we're, we're heading toward our seventy percent so we can take, start taking the mask off. But I would just, like, everyone to still be careful. It's not over yet. We're not out of the woods. And just be prepared, like, say, summer, school's almost out. I've almost had a couple incidents where I've hit kids darting between vehicles, leaving school. So just in those areas, just drive careful.
Jim?
I have nothing further at this time.
Thank you. Sean?
I would just like to urge anyone who hasn't got a COVID shot and vaccination, please go out and get it. I had a few friends that I found out had gotten sick in April and it's taken a month to recover. And they just thought that they were through it and realized, no, I mean, in April, that they weren't. So just please, if you got a chance, go get the shots, get the vaccination.
Paul?
Yeah, I, I'm finding some things to be encouraged by. I'm really excited that Cannon's is, is moving into town. That's gonna be great. I've talked to the owner and manager and they're really excited about coming here. And there's like a lot of businesses opening on Chestnut Street and filling vacant spaces, which maybe is a silver lining of having those vacant spaces, I guess. But no, that's, it's encouraging to see this kind of movement downtown. It's also really encouraging, I mean, the, you know, the grants, some of them are small, but like the grants that we've accepted tonight are really exciting. And I'm particularly excited about the work to come with Center for Community Progress. They're just a really top-notch organization. You know, the fact that Mary Ann was, was able to, to do the work to get us involved in that program is, is fairly commendable. So appreciate her work. And I'm sure there was work done by many other members of staff. So thank you for that.
I just spoke with Rob Smith yesterday. Really pleased with the construction he's doing on Chestnut Street. He's got some other projects that he's gonna be working on, on Chestnut. So with him working on that, the construction individuals there working, we may need to, to look at some parking issues or permits while the contractors are doing a lot of the construction work. So maybe we can have that put on agenda. You can maybe do some research on that that would help the contractors while they're doing the construction. You certainly don't want the contractor walking a block away from his vehicle to get equipment. So, but thank Rob and others that are investing in downtown. So we need to work with them. That's all I have. Any other questions?
You gotta move, right?
I move.
Well, I'm not sure. Are you finished?
No, I'm good.
All right, okay.
Did you move something?
I moved.
Would you move?
Second adjourned to executive, executive session for real estate. Very brief, very brief.
Very briefly?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
He moved.
Hi, second.
There you go, second.
Wait, I'm sorry. Katie needs a roll call.
Just do a roll call.
I, I need a second before I can do a roll call.
Sean gave the second.
Donahue?
Hi.
McKnight?
Hi.
Roa?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Sterns?
Hi. We're adjourned to executive session.